Councilman Nelson.
I'll go with that.
Hey, how are you, sir?
Hi, sir.
All right, let's call this meeting Neuer. We have a roll call, please.
Any remarks, Becky?
Present.
Councilman Tony Evans. Councilmember Rick Nelson.
Present.
Councilmember Debbie Rosso.
Present.
Councilmember Steve Saxenheimer.
Present. He's very good, by the way. Very good.
Councilmember Yolanda Smith. Councilmember David Huang.
Present.
Councilmember Yolanda Campbell, here.
We have a call. Miss Karen, you're not on our list.
Karen Cleveland.
Karen Cleveland.
Councilmember Karen Cleveland?
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Can we open the meeting with the pledge of allegiance, please?
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Couple of housekeeping items. Please note that the agenda, at the request of a councilperson, we've added citizens' comments to the end of the meeting, so they'll be at the front end of the meeting and the tail end of the meeting. Also, the June 7 minutes, there were some minor changes made, and were sent out, the proper minutes are posted out here. There was a vote change and a spelling change, but the ones that are on the table out there are the correct ones, and they were in your email earlier today. And also, there are... A councilperson has wanted to amend the agenda. If I could have that motion, please.
Yes, a motion to amend the agenda to table Council Bill 2216 in regards to chicken keeping.
There's a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D is struck from the agenda. All right. All right. Citizens' comments, if anybody wants to step up to the podium and have their say. Please remember name and address for the record, please.
My name is Michael Sappington. I live at 7725 Circle Drive, here in the city of Normandy, 63121. And the reason I'm here is because it's getting very dangerous down on Florissant Road, right at Dividea, where the old railroad track goes over. And the reason why I'm saying it's very dangerous is because the weeds on both sides of that boulevard are this high, and they're up. And the problem is, is when the weeds are that high, there's no way, if there's a person walking through there, can walk. First off, there is no sidewalk on there, correct, Councilman Hall?
Correct, yes.
And so you're walking at the narrowest part on an 18-inch strip about four inches off the ground. And at... Yes, and I have walked through there a lot of times on Saturdays, and it gets very dangerous. There are people speeding. This past Saturday, right over the Fourth of July weekend, I was walking through there with my dog approximately 15:30, and a man came by that looked exactly like former Mayor Pro Tem Hunt, doing at least 60 miles an hour. And I tried, and he was in the right-hand lane. And I foreseen him, and I backed off to cross there. But the thing of it is, is you can't see around that curb, and with the grass growing on both sides, not just on the right, not just on the east side, but on the west side, you have to, like, you're looking around, and if the people are driving the speed limit, you can usually make a fa... Even a guy like me at age 70 can at least make a little break there and get across without peril of getting... of perishing. But I seen there was a lady right behind me who also had a dog, and the dog almost got hit because of the weeds that are so bad there. Thank you. It'd be nice if we could get that one.
I appreciate it.
Maybe some DDT or Agent Orange.
Terry Gannon, 7620 Augusta. I didn't know we were supposed to say how old we were, Mike.
Did I say that?
All right, so I know that budget time is coming up. I want the city council to make a priority of getting the fountain fixed in the circle, because the businesses pay a lot of money in taxes. I know I pay a lot of money in taxes, just on my commercial building. I know when Schulte Hardware was here, they paid over $20,000 a year in taxes. Some buildings, our commercial buildings, pay over $30,000 a year in taxes. Now, I know all that doesn't go to the city, but Tony, you remember when we passed that half-cent sales tax? And Normandy was one of the first cities to pass the half-cent sales tax for economic development. I don't know, two other things, the parks, half-cent sales tax, and also the the use tax. So I think that brings in a whole lot of money every year, and it's supposed to be for economic development. If we can't even get the fountain going to give back to the businesses that pay the most money in taxes in our city when it comes to budget time, I think we need to make that a priority, and especially consider using that economic development half-cent sales tax money to get that going.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I have a question and a concern. Is there an ordinance for trailers being on the streets of Normandy? I'll wait here for that.
What's your name?
Tony, go ahead and say your name and your address.
Anton Klepper. 7703 Augusta Avenue.
Thank you.
Right across the street.
Okay. To answer your question, after tonight, there will likely be an ordinance to get...
I thought there was one already.
What's that?
I thought there was one already.
It's being addressed. Yeah.
I don't know what that means. I thought there was already.
Well, there's been some problems, and the police are aware, and three of them have been removed.
Okay. Okay, that's what I was wondering, because of those people who are going to be parking anything, they want you on the street. I parked my boat on the frickin' side of the street as far as that goes, if they're gonna let anything go on the streets.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Moving on. I mentioned the changes on the June 7 minutes to the June 7 meeting, which is on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
It's on the...
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes. Motion carries. Appointments, it's my understanding that the council wants to make an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Is there a motion? And the council is allowed one person to represent the council on that commission? And is there a motion to appoint a member of the council to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Let me make a motion to...
Do we have anybody?
Steve Saxenheimer.
Steve.
We have a motion to appoint Steve Saxenheimer to Planning and Zoning Commission. We have a second?
Second.
We have second, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes, ayes. Motion carries. Thank you for stepping up. Appreciate it. We've got an update from our municipal judge, Judge Dully, about the state of our courts. We've been struggling recruiting and maintaining staff, and Judge Dully will address that more for us. Thank you.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you all tonight. As I work for you, I will introduce myself. I am Chris Dully. I am the municipal judge here in the city of Normandy. I preside over the Normandy Consolidated Courts. I am also the judge for Country Club Hills and Hillsdale, both of which are part of our consolidated municipal courts. I appreciate the opportunity to come in and talk to you and familiarize myself with those of you who I don't know. I do know many of you on the council. Of course, most of you already know. I grew up here in Normandy. I grew up on St. Anne's Lane. My parents still live there. We lived there for many, many years. And of course, when it came time for me to, for my wife and I, eventually my wife, now, still my wife fortunately, to choose a place to live, we did make offers on homes in Normandy, but were ultimately rejected, not being good enough to be Normandy residents. We have to settle for Pasadena Hills. Someday, I hope, to move back into the city of Normandy. But I also don't like moving or change, so there, we're stuck for a little while longer. Enough about me. I came to address our courts. Our courts, when I took over in September from Judge Kelly, were at a very low point. COVID had hit us very, very hard. Additionally, I don't have to tell anybody what the issues were with staffing and with with the attitude of what was going on with people here from, let's say, about a year ago till September, when I came in. We lost our head court clerk. We lost the secondary court clerk. We lost the third court clerk. And in July of last year, about a year ago now, we had no court personnel, and we just had a judge, Judge Kevin Kelly. He was able to recruit one person to be the court clerk, of which a staff of one is a far cry from the staff of five that nine municipalities came to depend on. We had one. We recruited her from the city. Her name was Yolanda. She is fantastic. She was not entirely familiar with many of the systems that we were using, because St. Louis City had not been transitioned through this to the statewide system, but she has caught up, and she has brought our courts a great level of respectability. And I'm very proud that we have her on our staff.
I just wanted... I am not Yolanda.
Yolanda Robinson. Yes, no, it is not you, Councilman Campbell.
I give her emails.
Oh, do you really? That's funny. So Yolanda Robinson is our head court clerk. We struggled to find staff for a while. We recruited from other municipalities. The mayor looked far and wide. I looked far and wide. When Sam came on board, he looked far and wide. They put out many ads. And we were able to, excuse me, finally snag a court clerk from St. Louis County, Lisa. She was a godsend, I hate to say. She was everything we needed. She was hardworking. She was diligent. She was quick to pick up on our systems, having worked with them in St. Louis County. And as the judge at that time, I was so glad that we had her. And so she was able to, with the help of some other part-time work, really knock out the backlog that had accumulated during COVID and during the months that we had no court clerks or limited staff. And I was proud to say she really, really helped us get caught up. In the interim, we took over, the Consolidated Courts took over Hillsdale. We're very glad to retain our services after the previous terrible services they had been receiving. And we lost a couple of courts that we really, really didn't need anymore. And I'll stay away from that. Then we recruited, continued to try to recruit, and had people accept the job, and then no-show us. Mr. Mayor, how many people do you think that was?
There were...
Half a dozen?
Well, yeah, at least three that were just, take the job and apparently found greener grass elsewhere.
Oh, no, those were the people who were actually going to come. Then there were the people who said they would come and literally never showed up. And that happened again recently. It is very difficult to find any qualified people right now to work in the courts. And we have found that it is difficult to find qualified people. It is difficult to find anybody just to show up to work, even to be trained in the courts right now. And but we were able to hire another person finally, Betty. She has been a quick study so far. She has a lot to learn. She's never worked in the courts before, but she always found the courts to be interesting and was very glad to come and be a part of our team. Unfortunately, shortly after she started, Lisa left. Lisa's last day was today. It is demoralizing to lose somebody of that quality. It is very upsetting to see all the work that she put into this court to our courts here, and then to see her leave. And did she leave because she hated it here? No, of course not. Everybody loves it here. Sandwich. She left because another municipality offered her more money. Did they offer her a dollar an hour more? No. $2? No. They offered her at least $3 an hour more? Maybe $5?
I'm not exactly sure.
Right. They offered her, I mean, like a 30% raise. It's a lot of money. And she is exactly the kind of person who we need, not just in our courts, but working in the city of Normandy. She was bright. She was diligent. She wanted to be here, right? She left another job to join us. And most importantly, she really helped bring the level of respectability back to my court, back to our court. And I was very upset to lose her. We'll move on, right? Yolanda is here, and she is doing best she can to train a brand-new person with no court experience whatsoever. And fortunately, Lisa has agreed to come back and at least work some part-time hours with us. So two weeks ago, I thought this spiel was going to be a little bit different, in that I thought we had two full-time people with a bunch of experience and a new person who was going to be training, and we were going to have a staff of three, again, down from the staff of five we used to have. But at least I could tell you that we were well on our way. Unfortunately, things have changed in the last two weeks. Lisa's last day was today. But that does bring me to, I believe, the veteran, Mrs. Gannon, brought up budget time. I would ask, and it's not my place to ask, and it's probably inappropriate to even mention it, I would ask that in the budget that we consider possibly bringing up the starting salaries, possibly even raises for the people who are here, myself not included. I'm not... I have a contract. I'm not asking for anything else for myself. I don't want anything else. I work what I work, and I agree to that, and I'm perfectly fine with that. But I would tell the council that Lisa went to Webster Groves, right? Many courts who've lost people in the last two and a half years are ramping up, just like we are, right? All the tickets are starting to be written, and all the backlog is coming to fruition. All the tickets that have been written that nobody's ever shown up for, people are now showing up for. And all the courts that didn't have clerks are now looking, and Lisa was picked. And Manchester is paying significantly more than we are. I understand that. That's fine. Bridgeston, a city that I think we run parallel with every day of the week. I grew up thinking we were better than Bridgeston, and I still think that. But it's disheartening to see that their starting salary is $5 an hour more than our starting salary. I don't know how somebody wouldn't give that a serious look at a 30% raise, just for driving an extra five miles. And so I've come tonight to update the council on the status of the courts, and the status of the courts are, we are in very good shape, but we are perilous. We are not paralyzed. We will move on, and we will do what we have to do. But it has been difficult to fill positions when we have good, qualified people to supplement that. We have now lost 30% of our team, who was 50% of our team for about eight months. And now we have to replace that person, and it's going to be very difficult, given what we're advertising currently. So I would ask the council to consider, as you set your budget, that we do need qualified people. We have contracts with different cities. We are a very watched city. We are one of the two consolidated courts. St. Anne has a consolidated court, and Normandy has a consolidated court. And that should be, for all of you and everybody in this room and everybody watching on Zoom, a huge sense of pride, because we are one of the courts who survived, because we do it right. We were not punished. We were not closed. We were not, I apologize, we were not forced to join another court. People joined us because we do it the right way, and I still think we do it the right way. But I would ask the council to consider helping us continue to do it that way. And I thank you for the amount of time that you've granted me, and I hope you all have a wonderful evening. If you have any questions, I'll stick around for a couple minutes.
Thank you, Jake.
Thank you.
Report of officers. First, I'd like to introduce Ms. Sarah Simpson, our new city clerk. She's been with us six days now? Five days. Ms. Simpson has nine years of municipal government experience with the city of St. Charles, three as their deputy city clerk. And we're really blessed to have her on board as part of this team. Thank you. Bethesda Temple Church Community Day. They have this every summer, Saturday, August 27, 11:00 to 2:30. Usually, we have a police presence there, the fire department's there. Free school supplies, haircut vouchers, food and drink. It's a nice time. That's Saturday, August 27. Also tomorrow, 3 o'clock, kickoff meeting with the architects across the street. Now, we can't have the entire council there, because that would constitute a quorum. But the first four emails I get of those interested in attending that 3 o'clock meeting tomorrow afternoon, then I'll just respond that... But unfortunately, we can't all be there, because it would be a violation of the sunshine law, and we've had conversations about that all week. Last item. Before we close this meeting, we need to have a schedule workshop. We've got a lot of issues that we need to address, one being the upcoming budget. So before we leave, I'm going to recommend Thursday, July 21. But before we leave this meeting tonight, we do need to schedule a workshop for next week. And I will add, I'm going to address one issue that was brought forth, the citizen comment that was made about the fountain and the half-cent sales tax. I did discover we've not been running our Economic Development Commission properly. It requires an appointment from the school board, an appointment from the county commission. Both of those appointments I've been promised will be made this week.
The county did contact you?
Wonderful. Wonderful. That will free up the half-cent sales tax. We can put that committee to work in approving some of these projects. We've got bids already in place, and we've got some plans to make some things happen on Natural Bridge, and we've got some money to do it. So that's underway. Anyone else have a report?
I got a couple of things.
Go ahead.
Quick things. As we were walking around, looking at sidewalks, we were, we went down to Ward 2. We kind of took a tour through the whole city, looking for sidewalks. And we went through behind Bethesda Church, and I apologize, I don't remember the name of the street, but it's the second one down to the left. And I drive an F-150, which is just a regular old truck. I had about an inch on both sides, the way they were parked on both sides of the street. There's no way a fire truck or an ambulance could have got down there. I'm not picking on Ward 2, but that could be devastating for someone that needs emergency help.
Chief, those illegal parked cars?
Yeah, they can park on both sides, yeah. Unfortunately, normally, they stagger themselves, but they, sometimes they don't.
And most of them are, they're not licensed. They're bad.
Oh, the ones around the corner?
Yeah, they're bad.
Yeah, it was a little scary. If I had a duly, I couldn't have made it through. So I just wanted to bring that up, and that's not even my Ward. I wanted to know if there was any progress on the sidewalks. I know we were having the engineering company. And one other thing is, please don't forget my little sign on Norwood Manor that needs to be replaced. That's been up there nearly 50 years, please.
Sam will give a report on... See if he can keep his turn comes up.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Stephen?
Yes, I'm sorry. I was going to bring it up during budget time, but the one thing we talked about is a potential set of speed humps, not bumps. And that's the ones that are like over by Encarnate Work, where they're longer, and they're shorter, they're not as high. They're going to slow cars down. The reason why I wanted a couple temporary sets is, if we have a problem on a street, we can put them on there for a month or two, see if that corrects the problem. If it does, someone else has a problem, we could pick them up and put them on another street. And if anyone wants to look at what they look like, if you go to the Home Depot in Ferguson, in Central City, they have three sets, just in their parking lot. So they intended on slowing their people down. So if anyone wants to know. But I was going to bring them up as a potential. If they worked on a certain street and they were very effective, we could possibly go to some permanent ones. These are just a temporary idea to try and slow everything down.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I have a couple of things. The lights that were for at Teardrop Park, I did call Amhern again, because they did not come out. I found out the city actually owns those lights, and so I've contacted Sam and also Chris about the replacement. So they assure me that that's going to be something that we're going to get to as soon as we can. The fountain and the MDC grant that I've been talking about for a few months, I turned in the paperwork yesterday. It was very long, a long process. So hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we will have $8,000-plus dedicated to planting soil, live plants in the fountain area, and also the green medians around there. And also, some of the area right in front of the ice cream shop and everything. So this is a grant where basically, we will do the work in partnership with Beyond Housing and MDC. And also, we still need volunteers, because we are going to purchase live plants, and they have to get into the ground immediately. So I'm asking councilpeople and citizens, like councilpeople, please ask around. Everybody try to get to people, because we have not set a date yet. But as soon as we get things going, we will have to put those plants into the ground immediately. It's going to be a very strict schedule. And so this will, and my hope is that, one, it will help with the beautification of the central area, what we all call our downtown. Two, it will also help be a partnership with possibly the schools, where it could be like a community a community school learning event, where kids could come and learn about native plants. And then, three, the other thing is that it could also be a partnership between the city and citizens, where citizens will come and basically, like, take care of the area along with public works, because we don't want the citizens out in traffic and everything, but along with public works, we'll be able to take care of the area and then learn about how to keep native plants in our area, because it's a lot cheaper to do that than to go out and buy plants that don't grow back every year. So these plants, the reason why I wanted to have native plants is because they grow back every year, and they require less maintenance and everything for the environment. So that will be coming up in the next week or so, so hopefully by the next meeting, I will know if we got approved for all $8,000, and we'll have a better idea of the schedule.
Thank you. All right.
Shall we report? The, going down Natural Bridge, there's a balloon business, and I don't remember them ever asking for a business permit. It's above the Prestige Cleaners, and they have signs.
I can, they have now applied. We're doing a building... I can, they have now applied, we're doing a building inspection. The process was started, yeah. They did apply for a business license. And then the owner of the building came in and applied for a building inspection, which we have to have before we issue a building. There was apparently another one of these verbal deals made, so we're correcting that.
Got it. A resident, Justin Thomas, he was wondering if there could be a trash can by the pole on Lucas and Hunt, by the alleyway that was a driveway into Schulte Hardware. And because he ends up picking up trash on that lot. So he asked if I would bring that up. And, and the pole would hide it, it's not like it's going to be out. So if it was by the pole, chained by the pole, hopefully, people going by there wouldn't just drop their stuff. And the, he thought it would work. The, let's see. Are we going to start the process of reaching out to Glenacle Park? Are we going to start the process? That would be a good thing. The, let's see. Trash can. There's a Parks Board meeting next Tuesday. Members are writing a grant to update Tozal Park. We've met with Pasadena Hills about First Responders Park. They've created a mission statement and goal. They're planning a movie night in August. So it's been moving forward quite well.
What time is that meeting on Tuesday?
6:30.
Thank you.
Yeah, July 19. And then, just to bring up newsletter, that would be just really a good, we haven't had one in forever. And is there any kind of initiative?
Nothing, no, there's been no act, chief taken on yet.
How can we talk about it, think about it?
Well, we can bring it up at a workshop. Put it on the agenda.
Please, yeah, that would be really good.
Okay.
The gentleman on St. Anne who does our code violation, what's his name?
Rick. Rick Sampson.
Rick Sampson, yeah. He's doing a pretty good job. I've got some residents that said that he did get some, some residents that had a few problems with their gutters and stuff. And I think they, they've done the work. So he's doing a good job. And another thing, I just want to say, the chess program this year that we had at the municipal building last year, was going to be at the St. Vincent's the first two weeks of August. So if there's any parents or grandparents that got any kids in the district that want to come, it's free, the Scholastic Center in the Central West End, and one of the sponsors along with the municipal league, I'm sorry, with the police pals and of course us and the police and our 24/1 footprint. So if you need a flyer, we got it here. And I'd like the council members to get it out to some of your grandkids. Any of you can come down and do a little donating of time if you want to.
Good.
And it's also available digitally. If anyone wants to share it, email or social media, what have you, it's also available in a digital format.
And then on Fridays, they're going to swim. And then Tuesday, Thursdays, they're going to have pizzas and stuff. So it's all free for the kids.
All right. And that's from the first through to 12?
Yes, first two weeks of August. 9 to 12 in the morning. So get some grandkids out, come out, little volunteering and stuff. Okay?
Thank you.
And to piggyback off of that, Rick, same, same facility that'd be, actually, I'm sorry, here at the Normandy Early Childhood Learning Center on the 13th, which is the tail end of that, it's the Saturday, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Beyond Housing is sponsoring a Beyond the Backpack event for children within the 24/1 footprint. They will have free backpacks for the kids as well as free haircuts, for instance. Bounce house activities all morning and into the afternoon. But it's Saturday, August 13th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Where is it?
The Normandy Early Learning Center, catty cornered to us here.
Yeah, next to the campus classroom.
Absolutely. I just found out about it today, so.
Yeah, thank you.
And what time, what time?
10:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Well, I have a few things. As far as speed bumps, chief, did we ever get a price on speed bumps? I know budget tags, something that you can fit them in there somewhere.
Right, no. So in reaching out to a couple, even dealing with Cool Valley, their pricing expired, they got a quote on some. But I think they're very different than what council and section hours. You want to do the, and those you probably are better.
I think the humps are more effective personally.
Well, I don't think the humps will stop them, we mean speed bumps. Because they have temporary speed bumps that you can move and put out there, take them up when the snow falls and stuff like that, which they're a little higher. Because the way they're driving now, the little humps, they're going right over others. I mean, they're driving straight through.
Let's agree that we need to address the problem and put it on the workshop.
I have a price right now with the, with the old ones, yeah.
Can we check into it?
Yes.
And chief, and not councilmen, I do know that Pasadena Hills, I believe, also was looking into that. Perhaps we could reach out to see.
If we could get that called.
Yeah, whatever, whatever existing research they, they've already got or any pending deals they might have.
Well, you have to have like a warning.
I really don't want this break into a discussion about speed bumps. Let's move forward, workshop agenda, I, okay. All right, anything else?
Yeah, one more.
Okay.
Chief, over on Horizon? Yes, the gentleman over there that's parking illegally. Is there any way possible we can bring this guy in and have a talk with him? Because he, he keeps repeating over and over. He'll clear it out and then he'll repeat, okay. Is there any way we can bring this guy in to have a talk with him?
Yeah, and that would be, if we want to do it non criminally, that'd be something that Rick, our co reportsman also, because that, and just have him deliver a letter and say, hey, we want to have a discussion. I can be present, but it will be a civil thing between the council and the mayor and him. And then see if we can handle it that way, or else we just keep towing the cars, you know?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, because I.
All right.
Okay. Moving on.
That's it. I have one more thing.
Oh, go ahead, don't know.
I'll save it for another time.
Don't worry.
You're good? Well, as far as cars running stop signs. At the corners of the Newton Road and Bellwood, they're constantly running that sign at the Newton Road, they're not even stopping. And this is on a regular basis. I mean, we even have tow trucks and dump trucks that's running the stop sign now. They're not even stopping.
Right.
Beautiful.
Okay.
So maybe we can get some.
Well, that will piggyback right into the chief's police report.
Okay.
Good evening, all. My first reported part is I'm going to take care of the Bermuda stop sign. That was, that was actually on here.
Okay.
I'm joking.
Yeah, because they're flat, they're not even stopping.
Right. So for the month of June, our guys have been diligent in doing their duties. We handled 749 calls for service. We prepared in 110 case reports. We have an uptick, we wrote 63 citations throughout the month. Corresponding with that, we made 22 arrests, and that's for adult arrests. And we had six juvenile arrests. The trends that we have going on here normally is stolen vehicles. Stolen vehicles nationwide. These kids, and it's not even for anything else, they, they are stealing cars and they're putting it on Instagram and TikTok. And they're having competitions to see who can steal the most cars. I was just at a meeting yesterday with the chiefs in Woodson Terrace just this past weekend, had 22 cars stolen. Ferguson had 25 cars stolen. Last month, we had 20 vehicles stolen. And then we, I didn't put this on, I neglected on your report. But there were also seven vehicles that were tampered with, which means they, they tried to steal them, but they weren't able to steal them. If you haven't heard about the trend with the Kia boys, they are able to break into Kias and Hyundai's and break the column and start the cars with a car charger cord. And they, again, they post this on TikTok. I've seen the videos left and right. We, along with that, we're taking a report to the 20 vehicles. They've been dumping vehicles here too. So we recovered 11 vehicles last month from Ferguson and St. Louis City. So they're still not there, come here, steal a car, drop them off somewhere else. We've recovered 13 of our reported stolen cars, obviously outside of jurisdiction. What has went down, and that's just probably due to people not calling, is we've only had seven calls for shots fired. Also too, we've had, with the unfortunate incidents of the shootings that we've had, once you take certain elements out, they don't shoot at them again because they're either dead or in hospital. So that's probably why they haven't. I think there's been an uptick in Bell Ridge. So it's just moved just west of us. And we're dealing with that right now too. A couple of points of interest, we had on June 10th, we had officers who were out there running, running traffic. They pulled over a stolen vehicle, two juveniles, 15, 14, I'm sorry, yeah, 15 to 14 ran. They were charged with tampering and marijuana possession. They were, they stole the car, took them to the juvenile. Before the report was completed, they were back home with their parents. So this slaps on the wrist, and I'm sure they were out the next day doing the same thing. We also had, over on Woodstock, we had officers responding on June 20th for a shots fired call. They get there, there's three subjects with weapons, two with rifles, one with the handgun. They got into a physical altercation. Shots were fired from all the gun towers, no one was struck. But one of the subjects hit, one of the subjects with the butt of the rifle and the other one hit another subject with the butt of the handgun. So all three subjects were arrested for weapons charges and assault second. And they were all acquaintances. But it was, there's an ongoing feud over there. But they all sent, none of them lived there, so they were all given trespass notices so they can't come back. We gave that to the residents over there. A couple of things going on, we just brought back. So in the trend right now, and what Judge Della was saying, it's just hard to get good help nowadays. We're, the council did a great job getting us, my officers to raise and, and that helped with my retention. The, we're getting new vehicles, that's helping with retention. The mayor and Sam, they approved some new computers and ticket writing machines. So that's helping with retention. However, these, it's a little crazy out there. We have St. Louis County, who is now offering a one for one for years of service to come work for them. So if they, we have officers here that have been here eight years, they go over to St. Louis County and they get those eight years of service. Like they've been working there for eight years. It's that bad. We got, we got people that are giving forth, what Councilwoman Campbell was suggesting last year about giving some bonuses, they're giving $4,000 bonuses. So we're doing everything we can to keep the guys. On that note, we were able to bring back two, two guys that left us and they came back because Normandy is a great place to work. And if Tom is in here, but Tom, he's our IT guy. He's actually going to stop being IT administrator and come back and be one of my police officers. So that's, that's a good look. And another guy that went to another, to the North County Co-op, he's coming back. He actually starts Friday night. So we're in a good trend, we're still four down with those. But we're making headway and hopefully, we can get rolling on that. With the stolen cars, we have two things that we're enacting right now. We were able to, one of my officers had a good relationship with the DEA operatives that work in our North County area. And we were able to borrow a static camera from the MOIC. We get it for a month. Now, we told them we were using it for drug, you know, drug charge, or drug, to make drug apprehensions. But we're using it in the same area that we're getting all our stolen cars. So it's a twofer. And, and along with that camera, everything is recorded and, and everything gets saved. So that's going to help us out. We haven't got anything with it yet. I don't know if, you know, because it's, it's not inconspicuous, so they see it. So, I mean, if nothing else, it would stop them because they were hitting this one apartment parking lot very heavy. So that's slowed that down, but hopefully, we can get somebody on that. Also, my detective sergeant put us in line to participate with the bait car program. St. Louis County's doing that, so we're on the list. We were actually supposed to do this last Thursday. We got pushed back, because another department needed it more than us. So hopefully, this Thursday, we'll have the bait car somewhere in the city of Normandy. And we work in conjunction with several other municipalities. And then we'll be running that in the evening. The, along with the schools and then with us, and I just thought about this when I was putting this together this evening. I'm working with St. Vincent's Home and the Normandy School District. Actually, to help them develop active shooter reaction plan. St. Vincent's has nothing. So I'm building their program from the ground up. Going to school district, working with, with them. They have a template that we're going to use. And we're going to make sure that the early childhood center and elementary school are secure. We're also going to run some scenarios over at the high school before they open up to get the officers familiar. And I'm going to have my officers running through. But we're getting that together. And I'm going to, Mayor and Sam, we got, we pretty much need to get some help here too. We're pretty secure, especially with the security measures we took with the, with the door locks. But I'll, I'll get us a program, we'll sit down and get that together. Councilwoman Campbell approached me about getting some cameras for our big problem, which is that circle, you know, circle, the, everything's getting, that fountain's getting damaged every day. We haven't had any accident reports reported in the month of June. So they're hitting it and just leaving. So we don't have anybody to hold accountable. But if we had a camera up there, that would help out. I priced some, I don't know if you're going to like it, but, so we have three cameras that we have a choice of, that would work for us. And that's solar powered or that we can, you know, work with Amhern U.N. connected to a light bulb. The cheapest one is $17,000. The next one is $24,000. And the third one is $28,000.
Is this a lease?
No, this is to buy. So now they do have lease, they do have lease fund. But the police one, the ones that the police departments use, they buy theirs and they, they use them within their. Now, I don't know if the county would.
Well, I've seen, I've seen them in, like, the parking lot at Schnucks. And I've seen them on construction sites that are now so big.
Right.
Which is in the picture that I sent you.
Right. And then, what it is, the city, the city, like the city of St. Louis, they move those around. They buy those and then they, they loan them out. And the people, the businesses request them, the business districts. We just, so it would be where the city would have to buy it and then we could move it wherever we want it. But they do have a lease plan. And so I'm, I have a Zoom meeting with, what is this place? I can't think of the name, oh, it's right here. With the Mobile Pro tomorrow. And I'll see about what, what it will cost us to get it. There is a cheaper version, it's $11,000. And these are the ones that are panoramic and they do come with all the software so that we can put it on as many laptops as we want. We can put it on cell phones, also, I mean, you guys can watch it at home. But it's, that one, $11,000, it operates off of a diesel generator. And that one, that's not even practical, especially down to where we want it. But, so I'm going to get some more information on these. But yeah, we, it would, we would benefit greatly with a camera right there. Because I'm just, especially if you guys doing all this work on that fountain and planting and everything. And we're not getting anybody, you know, unless we post somebody there, so. And, oh, one more thing, I just started formulating, we're going to do, the officers are going to do a community service project. So we're going to work with Rick. So um, we're gonna work with Rick and we're gonna need some help. So we're gonna need some people to loan out some uh, push mowers. And then uh, work with Rick and we're gonna try to see if we can get a list of uh, either elderly people or people that can't really afford a lot. Um, to go by and one weekend, officers are gonna go out and cut some grass and trim some, trim some uh, hedges. So um, that's in the, the beginning stages. So first thing we have to do, I have the, I have the guys that just need the equipment because we don't have, yeah, we don't have the equipment. So.
I have a list of people that uh, that we work with right now.
Okay. And but yeah, that's, so we're, we're ready to donate a Saturday and a Sunday to come out and cut some grass and help some people out.
Let's see if we're gonna, Tony, who's the previous uh, uh, did we have a uh?
Camera company? I get you, sorry.
Okay, perfect.
Did we have a?
Huh?
When is, when does?
Oh, I'm getting it out. I just had to, I'm gonna get the long ones first and then.
Let me know.
Yeah, Tony, in the past, didn't we have a camera company that we were working with, a vendor on Natural Bridge?
I'm not sure.
Um, recall?
Is that the guy that spoke for the cameras and never did?
Yeah. Yeah, did we have a guy?
Do you guys have any questions?
Did we give him the money?
Any, any questions to Chief?
Is it possible like with the um, the ring, like the ring camera available for people to let for us to start a program? Or where they share the camera with the police department?
Yeah, so we, originally we had that program, Captain Sanders was telling me about it this, a couple of years ago when we were, the police department bought a bunch of them and we're giving them out and the programs, you know, the part of partnership was, you give us. But right now, we don't have a problem with, people are, are very willing to give us their ring camera.
But is there a program where you don't even have to go to the person? Because I know like I can share my ring with her. Yeah, so she can see me, she can see my ring without me selling her something. So like if you already know that like on Normandy Place, there was an accident or there was something, you wouldn't even have to go to the person. He would have to see you go. You would just go to Normandy Place and he would just look at there because they had already shared it with you.
Oh, well that, that, that we can do. I, I don't know if that program is not active right now, but that's, yeah, we can go with that.
Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Public Works, Chris Harris.
What did I start?
The obvious. The question is gonna come to you first.
I got answers for all y'all questions. Um, first off, uh, if you guys haven't noticed it, we have caught up with all our moorings, basically all our thirties plus properties. Everything has been cut once a week now. Um, we have all three moors back. Waiting to get one push mower, then we'll take back over cutting City Hall. Only, if we won't be able to cut ourself in-house will be Hosea. Um, to cut Hosea, I would need at least four zero turn moors. I don't have four zero turn, turn moors. So, but other than that, teardrop, everything else, we cut in-house now. Um, we will start cutting Bermuda again. I guess it was turned back over to us just because state don't wanna cut it. So we'll take care of it. Uh.
Well, and, and, and address Mike's concern too about those weeds. Those were state and we try to get state to take over some of their own work and.
Florence and.
It's Florence and Road. Okay, you know, as you're heading down Florence and Road towards the uh, Gromon on Florence and Road. The old bridge there, the old railroad bridge, right around that bridge on both sides, on the, on northbound lane and the southbound lane. The weeds up there are so far, they're so high, you can't see around it.
That's a state road in the.
It is. But so you think a citizen should get killed because uh, the state didn't do their job?
You guys can call and get, and push them quicker than we can.
Oh, okay.
If we start cutting it, it's ours. They're not gonna go out and cut it. That's what happened to Bermuda. If Rodney whoever didn't have them cutting it, they would cut it. But since they cut it for so long, it's been donated to the city. They're not gonna cut it.
That's no big deal with me. I'm not gonna get killed there. But probably some young girl, a citizen. But that's okay, sir.
Yeah. Uh, Normandy Manor side.
Yes.
Perfectly good sign. It needs to be painted. I took the wood off of it, the wood off the back of it was just riding. It's a perfectly good sign. There's nothing wrong with it. It just needs to be painted.
Good.
It's a couple of places. I'll call around. We store signs like that that'll paint. We can paint the posts, but the sign itself, we don't have, you know, the capability to cut it, but I'll call around and, and once I find something and get the price, we'll get it, you know, painted and put it back up.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem. Um, teardrop. I had Ryan Hole Electric out today to give me quotes on all the lights, serious City Hall, the lights down at the fountain. And teardrop, it's something going on with teardrop. There's not, there's no way eight light bulbs are out. So, um, uh, me and Sam signed off on the proposal. They should be out sometime, either later this week or next week to see what's going on with it. If it's, well, once they fix it, then we'll take it over from there. But uh, it's not just light bulbs. Um, but they'll fix all of that. Um, he's gonna give me a price on all the lights around the fountain to reset them, to get them going and everything. So once he gives me that, we'll take care of that. The two lights on the parking lot right here, he's gonna uh, troubleshoot those and also let me know what's going on with those. Next. Oh, we will uh, start stick and picking Nor, uh, Natural Bridge twice a week on Mondays and on Fridays. And we will also empty trash on Natural Bridge twice a week on Mondays and Fridays. So and we're also police, uh, we come in at six because of the weather, because of the hot weather. Uh, I have the gas. They're gonna start policing Hosea first thing in the morning in the parking lot, making sure everything's picked up around it.
Thank you.
No problem. Your speed bump, I put six of them in when I was at Ferguson. You don't pick them up in the snow. You have to hammer drill them down. You leave them there. They're rubber. Um, I will get the price for them tomorrow, so don't worry about that. Uh, but you have to hammer drill them down into the asphalt. You can't put them on concrete streets. They have to be on asphalt streets. It's best to leave them there for a whole year. Don't pick them up and start moving them. Leave them there. Uh, and then you just go from there. I, I wanna say I paid somewhere around, I think either it was thirteen or fifteen hundred. Well, it's two of them. Depends on how deep the street to see how wide the street is, but I'll get all that tomorrow. I'll go down there and get everything for that and give you guys the price. Uh, next council meeting, but you have to leave them there. There's nothing you wanna keep picking up, moving, picking up, moving, cause then you're not gonna deter them from anything. But when we put them in, you have to put a speed bump sign up to let traffic knows both ways. That's you coming to a speed bump. Yeah.
Chris, can you give everybody an update on our?
Bucket truck.
Bucket truck.
Um, we had, everything was done. We should've had it back last week. As they go to get everything going, the PTO motor had burned out on it. So we had to order a new PTO motor. It should be in Friday. We're hoping to get it back the middle of next week. But everything is fixed. It can pass inspection and basically they told me it's like a, having a brand new truck now. I mean, we only, it's only about like sixty-seven thousand miles on it or somewhere in there. And we don't use it that much, so I think that'll last a long time. As long as we keep the maintenance up on it every year, we should be fine.
Good, thank you.
Can I ask Chris a question?
Yes.
What about the trash on Bermuda?
We're gonna stick and pick that, with the trash bags or trash can?
Trash, period.
We're gonna stick and pick that twice a week, but the thing with Bermuda is just like Natural Bridge. We can stick and pick it today. By the end of the day, they grab down and throw it right out.
Yes.
So it'll look like we didn't do it, but we're gonna do that uh, twice a week also.
Chris, what, what days are you gonna be doing that?
Um, we're hoping to do it on Mondays and Fridays and it all depends if we cut it that day. Of course, we'll do it whenever we cut it.
Sure.
But uh, if this gets out of hand, I can send them out whenever the sticky pick.
Let me know. I can try to join you all.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question? So I pick up trash from coming from Bermuda. Is there a way of, of place where I can place the trash bag?
Yeah, anyway, um, I'll give you, I'll leave her a thing of yellow trash bags that you can pick up from here. Okay. And that's so I know it's our trash bag and we'll get it. Cause if you just start leaving black trash bags around, they'll be everywhere. And it's like, you know, people think it's the trendy thing just to leave a trash can. I'll give you yellow bags and the guys will know to pick up.
Thank you.
They're our bags.
Mr. Harris, uh, when you come down Bermuda going south, before you get to Contour, there's a road that goes, I guess you'd say west at Modoc and there's a fence there. You familiar with what I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Now, uh, the residents on Contour, they complain about the, the weeds and the grass. Is it Modoc's or is it ours?
On Contour?
No, no. It's the back road, like the alley of Contour. They're the.
Yeah, there's a little, there's a little side road.
It goes all the way back to the back.
Just got a little gate up, a little chain up there, just a little side road.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's a gravel road.
Yeah. I'll find out for you for sure. If it's ours, but I think it's Modoc's if I'm not mistaken. And that's another situation where I wanna pressure them as much as I can because I know state, once you start cutting something or doing anything to it.
Cause they don't cut it. I mean, they even have deer come out of there sometimes.
And see, the thing is by me calling, they're gonna tell me whatever. But if the residents call and stay on them and stay on them, they'll come out for you guys faster than it will come out for me as being a director.
Do you have the number for them to come?
Um, is it the same number, Sam, you gave me for Modoc? Or no, it was the same as counting. I can get a number for you.
Do you have any word on the sprayer for the weeds, the extra sprayer?
That's on my shot. That's on my. But yeah, once I get those, um, I already, the guys know that, you know, I showed them what they have to do. Um, if you guys haven't noticed, I showed them how the top trees coming down Natural Bridge, you know this Natural Bridge? I've raised the canopies of all the trees where you couldn't see on the street. So yeah, it's a lot of things that, you know, we're gonna change around.
Mr. Harris, you did get some help, right?
Yes. We hired another guy. Uh, and we have four full-time guys now and I can turn it around. I can turn it around.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Question, Chris, before you.
Yes.
You, you mentioned something about speed bumps, couldn't put them on concrete?
You can't put them on concrete sheets.
So what can you use on concrete?
Um. You don't wanna drill into concrete streets because it starts to chip. It's different things you can put out there, but.
So is there, is there something heavy enough where you can just lay them down and they're not going anywhere?
Yeah, but those, okay, the ones you just lay down is just a thick rubber and after a while, they kind of wear out. If people run them in the same area, you'll see where they'll start to dip. So, um, concrete sheets usually put the asphalt, uh, um, speed bump on. You just have an asphalt company come out and put a asphalt speed bump on. Because the ones that you wanna move, you start chipping into their concrete, now you're having problems with cracking the concrete.
Yeah.
Hey Chris, one other question. Where are we putting our trash? Does Waste Management get our trash? We've been picking all that, we get the bags?
Us?
Yeah. Where are we?
Um, I had a dumpster down there, uh, Public Works, where we clean out everything. So we're trying to get another dumpster down there from Waste Management. But right now, we just trying to put it here at City Hall when we have a place to put it. But you know, I'm hoping they do a better job of emptying trash and not get a dumpster down there and we can really collect everything and they just come pick it up.
Cause I understood they kind of messed up with City Hall not getting the trash.
Yeah, they kind of messed up everywhere.
So they finally started getting Hosea for our.
This is work in progress. All right, okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Mr. Ellis, City Treasurer.
What do you have for us? Good evening, um, Mayor, and uh, council persons. I have uh, very, 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 very positive news. Um, with the reports that have been prepared by the Finance Director. Um, the first part of good news is that considering that we're now going over the months of March and April, we're only one month behind. So we would anticipate that at the uh, August meeting, we would be able to go over the months of May and June, at which point we would be uh, caught up. That's where we need to be. So that's one positive thing. Uh, the second positive thing is that noting that we have had uh, two months of uh, positive net income. Um, we are now, as of the end of April, uh, reporting an overall positive net income uh, for the fiscal year. So that's for the first seven months through uh, this fiscal year. So that's the second um, good news. So that being said, um, I'll go over um, March and April very briefly. Um, if you look at um, the March statement, um, under section A, for the summary, you know, a total income of two point zero two million dollars compared to total expenditures of two point one million. Excuse me, two point zero, two point, yeah, two point one, sorry, two point one million. That results in a net deficit for March of eighty-one thousand dollars. Um, the general fund balance, um, is currently at four hundred fifty-one thousand. And again, that's as of March thirty-first. Um, for income, the year-to-date actual, again, is two point zero two million compared to the budget amount of four point five million. That results in a amount remaining of fifty-five point one percent. Ideally, um, we would prefer for this amount to be below fifty percent, which would indicate a positive trend um, for increased revenues. So it's slightly below where it needs to be, but it is uh, increasing. Um, for expenditure by department, uh, we have an overall expenditure of two point one million compared to the budget of four point five million. Um, and again, this percentage of budget remaining is at fifty-four percent for the six months ended March thirty-first. This indicates that we are positive in that we are spending less than projected. Uh, so that is a good thing. Um, if you do happen to see any of these um, particular categories, if they are above fifty percent, they're performing well. If they are um, below fifty percent, that means they are exceeding the projected amount that had been set. And again, Sam, I know we had talked about uh, attempting to reclassify some of these, but we, we should probably be able to do that with the forthcoming budget to where everything will be a little bit more um, accurate with, they regard the courts and I think it was um, contracts, no, City Hall.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll note that on this report, I had it split more evenly between the two because before it was like ninety percent.
Right.
But, so that is reflected in here, but yeah.
Okay, great. All right. Um, any questions about the month of March? Okay. Um, for April, again, this reflects uh, completion of seven months for the fiscal year. Um, you have total income of two point four million uh, compared to total expenditures of two point four million. That results in a net income overall for the year of twenty-eight thousand. Um, the summary of the general fund balance, again, you increase from uh, four hundred and fifty-one thousand in March to uh, five hundred and ninety thousand in April. Uh, for income, the, the year-to-date, two point four two million compared to the uh, budget of four point five million, resulting in an amount remaining of forty-six percent. Um, the projected percentage for the month of April is forty-one point six percent. So considering that it is above that amount, um, still not earning enough revenues as projected. So considering that it is above that amount, still not earning enough revenues as projected. But still, again, we are moving in the direction of being able to earn some revenues towards that goal. And then for expenditure by department, $2.4 million year-to-date compared to a budget of $4.6 million. That percentage is 47.4%. And since that amount is above the 41.6%, that is a positive in that we are spending less than projected currently. Okay. Any questions about April?
I will note one thing. So, March and April both now include the March ARCA budget amendment, which kind of changes some things. So it's all properly accounted for, but that is part of the things, one of the things that is helping with some of the positive trends that we need to be noted.
Isn't, for the percent of the budget remaining, it's 55.1% like overall and then for total expenditure it's 54%? And then it's always like a little bit more than 1% off? Is that normal?
Well, somewhat it is, depending on what the activity is. So what this is saying is that, you know, we said we were going to try to get to $4.5 million for the entire year. But at this point, through the first six months, we've only gotten just a little over $2 million. So that's saying we've only gotten towards 45% of our goal. So yeah, if you're running behind, then that's when you happen to see numbers like this when it comes to revenues. But conversely, you're spending less on the expenditures, which shows in a better light because you're not having as much spent, which there in turn shows that you have, on the opposite side, you've only spent 46% of your expenditures. So it's kind of going both ways where, you know, it's 45% of revenues, 46% of expenditures. So that's a good thing, but expenditure's not so good for revenues.
Okay. Any other questions?
Can I have a motion to approve the March 2022 financial report?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the April 2022 financial report? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Thank you, Charles.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis.
Alright. City Administrator?
I'll be very brief. Like the mayor mentioned, Sarah came on board last week. So working on getting her oriented and helping in the city, it's been a huge help so far. And I'm just very excited. She's doing a great job. Planning and zoning met last Friday in regards to the special use permit application for the USDA facility. They passed through planning and zoning unanimously. They have recommended that the council approve the special use permit. What that means is, you know, we'll have to pick a day. And I think, I was discussing with the mayor earlier, we'll probably have a hearing before our August meeting. And now we have to issue 15-day notice for that hearing and notify the surrounding properties, which is mostly us and the county library. Not too many people actually live around that property, about the zoning, special use permit. And we will then have a council hearing for the special use permit and then you guys will vote on approval. And if that's approved, then the zoning is all good. I know that, I've been speaking to Jason at US Federal Properties, who's the gentleman who spoke here. I believe they're submitting their bid to the federal government today. And then we should know something hopefully next month about the selection of the bid. And so, and if they were to be selected, be contingent on the zoning, but yeah. And then also, I wanted to address community development block grant. So we have our previous year's CDPG funds, which is the Ward One Sidewalk project. I did get news that we're gonna have to, if we're gonna use county money to do a new engineering study for the project, we're gonna need to post a new RFP, so that's just another kind of a wait time that we'll have to do. But we'll get that rolling right away. It should be fairly simple. And then we can select the engineering firm and then they will create an RFP and then we can get RFP and then we can get contractors out and preparing the sidewalks. We also got our application for the 2023 CDPG funds in the mail. I believe it's similar amounts to last year, $66,000. I'll have to double check on that. That is due by the end of August and we will need a public hearing probably in mid-August about CDPG funds and how we want to use them. Last year, we used almost all the funds. We did some towards home improvement. Almost all the funds towards demolition of derelict houses. We have more derelict houses we could demolish. We have speed bumps we could put in. We have roads to improve. There's a lot of differing, a lot of different things we could do with the funds. And so definitely start thinking about what ideas you have. And we'll have the hearing in August for that and get that application in. And then, other, that's all I have. And looking forward to getting to old business and new business.
Good. Thank you. Alright. Moving on. Old business. Purchasing policy, Council Bill 22-12, second reading, in accordance of the City of Normandy, Missouri, revising Chapter 145 of the Normandy City Code in order to modernize the purchasing policies of the city of Normandy. Do I have a motion to approve Council Bill 22-12?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comment, concerns?
I just had a concern.
Go ahead.
I talked to Sam about this. Some of the ethics and fair labor wording wasn't placed in. And I understood the explanation about how he was expressing that he didn't think it was necessary, we didn't need it. But I just felt like it was something that the city needed to just assure, assure companies that we are a city that exercises these types of policies. That's all I'm saying.
Would that be page 18, letter B?
No, this was, this was, when we had the meeting and the workshop, this is, these were suggestions that I made about, about, about the wording and have like adding an ethics part. And some of it was added and everything, but all of it, all of it wasn't. And so I just, I understood his explanation when I talked to him today. But I still felt like it was something that it just needed to be, to be organized. But I understood his explanation.
Alright. And I'll note what has changed since the workshop and address some of what she was talking about. We changed the, anytime the Finance Director was mentioned, we don't have a Finance Director, we changed it to say clerk. Everywhere else Finance Director is mentioned in our code, can probably also be changed to say clerk. It's not really, besides the purchasing policy, it's not mentioned in substantive way. So I think that's an easy fix. We did add to Section 14520B on page 18, encouraging department heads to use, to give preference to minority-owned business enterprises and vendors with green and carbon neutral initiatives. There was never a time where we had to select between two vendors. The department head could give preference to one of those, a business that classifies as one of those two things. And then we, I just removed some of the language around purchase order triplicate and just said, you know, we retain files digitally and clarified some of that. And I added, and this is towards the end, a new section, 145155, vendor registration and approval. Anytime we're gonna use a vendor for any period of time over $600 in a year, we require that they apply to be registered with the city. It gives us their information, gives us a chance to, hey, send us your liability insurance if that's necessary. And then also provide us references and tell us if you're related to anyone on the council part in the city. And I think that's pretty standard. At $600, they already have to fill out a W-9, so it'll just be another piece of paperwork for them to have to fill out. Part of what Councilwoman Campbell was wanting and is lacking in this is more language around, you know, fair labor, prevailing wage, I assume, and all of that. We can still add those into our RFP projects, but applying that across the entire purchasing policy could make it very cumbersome to always check for those things. Anytime we need to just call a vendor out or register a new vendor. Anytime, and as I was telling her, anytime we use federal money or certain, the state has certain requirements about when prevailing wage is required, we do have to check for some of those things as well. And not bad things to check for, we definitely can, but those are for more of the larger projects as opposed to the entire purchasing policy.
Yeah. And I can add to that, too. One example is the gentleman who lives in town that we hired to Mo Ho Zell Park. He's an independent, small operation. He does an outstanding job, more than what we pay him to do. He just goes above and beyond. And that's one case where I don't know what he pays his help. And him being small and us being small, I don't know. That seems like a cumbersome process to get somebody to cut the park. So...
I understood the explanation, but my, this is the, this was the example that I gave to Sam. If we contract with a big company and then that big company subcontracts with another company and then that company then employs people who they do not provide a living wage to and they do not practice, you know, fair, fair employment practices and environmental, environmental practices and so on and so forth. And then it is brought to the attention of, let's say, ABC News. And then ABC News says, well, what's your policy for this? And we have no policy. Then it's kind of like shame on you for that. That's, but I understood his explanation for it being cumbersome. But I, and I know we can't check everything because you can't, you can't say that no, you know, that one won't get by you, is what I'm saying. But it's like if we just, if it's not, if it's not something that is going to, like to type it in, in my opinion, is not going to hurt anything to type it in. That's, that's all I'm saying. And I understood the explanation, but I respectfully just, you know, disagree with it, but I understand it. That's all I'm saying. I know we can't make sure that everybody that comes to Normandy does exactly what they're supposed to do. We've already had that happen with us, with a certain council person who came and did some work and it was all botched. So I understand how that goes. But what I'm saying is, it's just kind of like a, this is an area where we care about, you know, giving people a living wage and we care about these ethical things, so let's just put it on paper. That's all I was saying. I do not want to at any way, shape or form like hold this up or anything, but I'm just saying that was not a perspective on it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
That number...
All in favor of approving Council Bill 22-12? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
Two days. Eyes have it, motion carries. Item B, Council Bill 2213, second reading, in accordance of the City of Normandy, Missouri, amending Chapter 390 of the Normandy City Code to change the definition of commercial vehicles and to prohibit the overnight parking on public streets of all vehicles over a certain gross weight. Do I have a motion to approve Council Bill 2213?
I have something to say about it. Can I add something?
Well, let's get the motion and the second. And lacking a motion and a second, it will die and will be no need for a discussion. That's typically how we do it.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Comments or concerns?
The towing truck should be in there and the cab of an 18-wheeler should also should be on there, noted, because it's not noted on there at all.
I would suggest that the 18-wheeler would fall under the gross weight restriction of 18,000 pounds. It would exceed that. And the tow truck, I thought there was language that carried...
Well, a tow truck, I assume, would be licensed to a commercial entity and would not be used for residential use. So that would...
I would think that would clearly fall under the definition of a commercial vehicle.
I just want to make sure because when I see these tow trucks in the driveway, I want to make sure when I call Normandy, say, there's a tow truck in the driveway.
Yeah, and that's what it's to avoid, parking of commercial vehicles.
Okay. I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving Council Bill 22-13?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion carries. Are you, are we getting bill numbers on these as you go? Our ordinance numbers?
Not yet.
Thank you. Budget amendment, Council Bill 2214, the second reading, in accordance of the City of Normandy, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2022, 2021, 2022 budget to appropriate general fund reserves restricted by Order 742, popularly known as the Cell Tower Fund, in the amount of $15,000 for building improvements and maintenance of 7733 Natural Bridge Road. Do I have a motion to approve Council Bill 2214?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comment or concerns? Sure.
This 15,000, does, is that for the roof repair that we talked about?
It's gonna, it's gonna cover the roof repair that's already been made for $2,400. And in doing a walk-around on the building with the architects, they noted obvious water infiltration through the brick cap and it's gonna cause a problem. And they said it's just absolutely imperative that we stop water, regardless of what we're gonna do with the building. If we approve it, if we sell it, no matter what we do.
We can stop the water.
They don't want to see another winter of water infiltrating into this brick, this masonry walls and causing damage. So I put a buffer in there because I'm anticipating 78,000, we spent 24 now, and I don't want to have to keep coming back and coming back. We just reserve that. We'll make a line item for that amount for repairs on this building.
So this will cover anything that has to, that you think will happen in this year?
I'm very much hoping so. I anticipate that it will, yeah.
Could be a bigger ticket item, but 15,000.
But do we want to increase the amount, like cut that down or just leave it as good?
I'm pretty comfortable that this will get us through the winter. We're not gonna heat the building. We're gonna mothball it again. And by spring, we hopefully will have made a decision as to whether we're gonna try to sell a bond issue or we're gonna sell the building. Or we will have some resolution as to where we're going with this building. And this is to keep the building from crumbling in the interim. Anyone else?
Nope.
All in favor of approving Council Bill twenty-two dash fourteen?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Council Bill twenty-two fifteen, second reading, in ardent of the city of Normandy, Missouri, amending fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to allocate general fund reserves restricted by ardent seven four-two, popularly known as the cell tower fund, in the amount of thirty-four thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars for the payment of legal fees approved by resolution twenty-two dash zero seven. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Comments or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor of approving Council Bill twenty-two dash fifteen?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Item D was removed from the agenda. New business, Council Bill twenty-two dash seventeen, first reading, in ardent of the city of Normandy, Missouri, amending the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two budget to allocate the remaining amount of general fund reserves restricted by ardent seven four-two, popularly known as the cell tower fund, for the service of debt for the purchase of seventy-seven thirty-three Natural Bridge Road. Any comments, concerns on Council Bill twenty-two seventeen?
So we, we put that towards the cell tower, I mean, the, um, the funeral home, and then we get the architect's opinion, and then what if we choose to sell it?
Well, when we sell it, we're going to have to pay off the loan whether we sell it or don't sell it. Either way, the loan has to be paid off.
We just can't be in defaults.
Yeah, we are. Sam has advised me that this comes due in twenty twenty-five. It's a six-year balloon note that was taken out. So in twenty twenty-five, it has to be paid off. This is what, this, when do we want to pay this off? I, I, I know Councilwoman Campbell has some concerns, if, if you want to address that.
Yeah, um, do you have a find out?
I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Oh. So my concern was, this is a very eventful fiscal year, there's inflation, so gas is up, we have already taken our ARPA funds and given it to the police, which I think was, and salaries, which I think was a great place to, to put our money. My, my concern was, if you look at our budget that we already have, because the ARPA funds are going towards mostly the salaries, and if we get rid of the seven hundred thousand that we have as a cushion, we would probably have between a hundred and fifty and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars as a cushion for a city of this size, which is not a good plan. I think that we're in a way putting the cart before the horse, because whether you pay it now or you pay it later, seven hundred thousand dollars is going to be due. I think after we look at the budget, which we haven't done, I think after we get the, the architect's opinions, which we haven't done, I think that after we ask the citizens what they want to do with the property, and if they want to have their taxes increased to have it renovated, which we haven't done, then we decide, do you pay it now or you pay it later? But I think like, for us to go into twenty twenty, what year is this? Twenty twenty-three with no cushion would be not a good idea. That's, that was, that's my opinion.
That's fair. Well, that's also a conversation we can have at our workshop. We're going to have some choices to make. We can pay all of it, we can pay none of it, we can pay a portion of it.
And then one of the things that I asked Sam was also Angela's opinion about what that would look like.
And I, I spoke to her on the phone about it, and the first thing she mentioned was basically that Councilwoman Campbell, I, she, she's like, well, you guys are not going to have a whole lot of reserves if you do that. And the financial report actually itemizes that fairly well, if you go back and look at that. It, it shows you how much money we have in total, then it subtracts the ARPA that hasn't been allocated or spent, it subtracts what's in the cell tower fund, and adds a little bit back in due from other funds, and then that's the amount, minus the cell tower fund and everything else.
Yeah. Well, and what consideration, too? If, if, if the council comes to a consensus as to what you want our reserve fund to look like, how many dollars do you want in reserve? We could pay the balance of that. If we paid the whole thing off, we'd save about forty-eight thousand dollars a year in interest payments. But if we do that, we're broke, right? So we could find some middle ground and say, let's knock off a big portion of that interest payment, and still keep a reasonable reserve there in case there's, there's an emergency.
Yeah, and there's, there's, so there's the interest concern, I think most people are familiar, you know, you pay down the principal, your interest payments will be less. That's something to consider. The other thing.
The interest is four percent?
Yeah, it's four percent interest. And the other thing to consider is, is not a great thing to think of this as a reserve, because it's money, but we also have this liability up against it. So even if we don't pay off the liability, we can't really, you know, rest our, you know, rest on that reserve at all, because we have liability. And there's also, you know, there's, there's other legal reasons to pay down the principal of debt.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Moving on. The first resolution, a resolution to the city of Normandy authorizing Sikkich LLP to prepare a financial compilation for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. That's the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal year. As you're all aware, we put out an RFP to have that, that audit done, and got zero responses because of, we suspect it's because it was old. And it's not of much use anymore. We're well into, we're going to be asking for RF, uh, RFPs for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget year, right out of the gate here, it's going to be time for that. So does anybody have any questions about what this, um, this compilation report is? It, it, it's our, our auditor just, it takes all the twelve months of financial reports, compiles them into one report, it's submitted to us, and we approve it or not approve it, just like we do any financial report. And, and those can be also used to submit to the state, which are required. So any questions? All in favor of a resolution to the city of Normandy authorizing Sikkich LLP to prepare a financial compilation for fiscal year twenty twenty-one?
Aye.
All opposed, any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, last item on the agenda. A resolution to the city of Normandy authorizing the purchase of equipment for Normandy Green Team in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars and ten cents. Thank you for putting that list together with me. That's, that's.
That's the.
The, the, the crew that's, go ahead.
When we have the community cleanup, I have people sign up.
That's great. Oh, just never heard of it.
So in order for, yeah. You can't, you can't wait.
I'm like, what is Green Team?
In order for us to, um, to put the, the plant in, the MBC funds, um, we have to have certain equipment that we, we just don't have right now, so it's like aerators, um, back, oh, not hose, we don't need that. Hose, just, just regular garden stuff that we need, and safety vests for people and, and stuff like that, so, yeah.
All right. All in favor of a resolution, city of Normandy authorizing the purchase of equipment for the Normandy Green Team in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. All right. When it's this time.
Something to keep in mind, too.
Sure.
There is a tiller that was bought about a year ago, two years ago? Where the rookies that do the field?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a brand new tiller.
Have you seen it?
Yeah, well, it's up in Old St. Clair Station, it's in the brand new.
Gas or electric?
Gas. That's something that you guys can also.
We, we didn't have a motion and a second on that last resolution. If we can redo the whole thing.
I'm sorry. We will redo the whole thing, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve resolution of the city of Normandy authorizing the purchase of equipment for the Normandy Green Team?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
For what I was saying, it was bought to use for the field, and they tried to use it, not be used.
Well, I, I, we can look for it, but I've never seen it.
Up in Old St. Clair, that was last time I seen it.
I don't agree with Chris. Was need to do that, because I.
Last time I seen it, it was in St. Clair.
If it's still, if it's still there.
And it was brand new.
Yeah, he would eat it. I don't know how to do that.
Before we adjourn, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
Oh, we got to insist, Council.
You got the amendment.
Oh, we did add that, I don't have it on my agenda.
And we also need to talk about a July workshop.
Yes, thank you. Citizens' comments, please. Am I in trouble?
Yeah.
I think so.
Sheriff Blackwood, seventy-six seventeen Augusta. I would like to ask, are we ever going to do anything with the Hunt House, to get the school, the, uh, Khan House up there in the middle of Burmese and Forest Road? That the school district owns, and the Khan Committee has never cut up their end of the bargain where they were going to fix it up or do whatever they're going to do. And you negotiate something with Khan and the school district, get it torn down, because it's a biggest ice sore in Normandy.
Thank you.
Okay, she should have just talked to me before she came up here. So Khan has a meeting Thursday night about renewing the lease with the school district. One of the things that we cannot do, because it's owned by the school district, is we can't make the repairs on the house, it's up to the school district. School district says that they don't want to put the money into the house, because they'd rather put the money into educating children, I get it. So I would think that because it's sitting in Normandy, if you don't like it, you should have Rick send a notice to the school district. And they'd have to do something about the house, because we have tried and we can't do anything because we don't own it. So, um, there's that.
Terry, I, I heard that the family that donated it to the school is stopping any development of it.
Right, so it, the, the school district can't sell it, because there is a deed restriction on the property. It says that the school district would transfer ownership in any way, it reverts back to the family. So then the family, the Hardy estate, which they are still around, it would revert back to them. Well, okay then, if they like it so much, you know, I don't know.
And the city then, um, hold them accountable.
Well, until they reown it. The school district owns it, has to be used for educational purposes. Right now, the garden, all of ice is education, as far as the school district is concerned, because we do have students that garden there, and we have experimental gardens and all this kind of stuff. So it is being used for educational purposes. The problem is just the house is an ice sore. So it's a whole big, it's a whole big thing, it is a big thing. So, um, there's that. Now, what, I was going to say something, oh! So I want to go back to the, um, whether we pay off the building. I just want to say that four percent interest is a really good interest rate, because right now it's at, it's at six and a half percent, heading towards seven. And you keep dipping into that little money, fifteen thousand dollars here or there. I, I would rather see us have a better plan, if you're going to sell this property, if you're going to get some money, pay that off. If, as a realtor, if you were my client, I would tell you to hang on to the property, because the interest rate is so low, and just make plans to do something else with it, either sell this property to pay it off, sell that property, pay it off, get a better plan before you decide what to do, because four percent is a really good interest rate. And if you keep dipping into it like you are, even fifteen thousand here and there, you know, like Alanda said, it is a, you know, it's, it's not a great cushion, but it is a cushion for now. And, you know, if everything happens with, you know, the USDA, the way we hope, and with the South Umsel Campus, the way we hope, you know, I think get a plan before you just pay off money on a, pay off money you don't have on a property you don't even like. So that's my professional opinion. I forgot one more thing. She's, sorry. As far as the, um, training the clerks for the courts, can you just put in their contract that once we train them, they can't leave for a certain amount of time, or they have to pay the money back, because we can just keep training them, and they leave to a higher job? So that would be one thing you can do to keep from losing people.
Thank you. All right. Workshop for a lot of items that we just attached to the workshop agenda. I've heard that from everyone, and it looks like Thursdays are the best night for workshops. Thursday, July twenty-one. Is, is, is everybody agreeable to do a six-thirty workshop on that evening?
Yeah.
Yes. All right, done, Thursday. Your goodest notices, right, Sam? Yep, it'll go out and.
One of the topics of discussion for that night is we'll, we'll be talking about our vision statement, our mission statement, and some of our values. So keep that in mind before, and try and come up with some ideas. I'll try and send out some of what other cities have, but the reason why we're, we're doing that first is, it's really important to have those things written out and agreed upon before you start making decisions on spending millions of dollars. So that, we'll, we'll address that as well as everything else, and start getting into the budget.
Thank you. There's some legal issues that need to be discussed. I'm looking for a motion to go into a closed session to discuss legal issues. So, do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call board, please.
Councilmember Cleveland? Councilmember Saxenheimer?
Yes.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Huang?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rosso?
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. One question before we go. Does anyone want to have a flyer for this chest? Anyone want a flyer, information? You're talking about the, uh, any of you, uh, people out there?
Yeah, thanks, Jesus. Well, that's a, I got, he's rest.